Mr. Massey, bait you didn't get back to me. Oh, my thank you.
I don't say good morning, I say grand rising. I don't want you to mourn all day. So don't say good morning to me. I don't want to mourn and do it all day. There you go. Okay.
It's good, it's appropriate. I didn't see anything wrong with it. I had to hook up with that line of lawyers.
Because Savannah lawyers are scary. I ain't got time to deal with Savannah lawyers. Pre filing, did you write that on that? Okay, and it's something else I got going on too. I'm gonna talk to you about it. Probate court.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and...
I like it.
We're gonna go ahead and, um, go ahead and get started. We have forum and we have a package agenda. So we're gonna get started. Open your leg it if you would, lead us to the word of prayer before we get started.
Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Heavenly and gracious Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity that we have before us. Lord, we thank you, and we ask you to continue to be the hedge protection that surrounds each and every one of us at this table. Lord, I ask you, Father, to be with our mayor, be with our city manager and staff as we make the decision that's gonna impact our entire city. In Jesus' name we pray, man.
Thank you all so much. But our workshop agenda today, eagerly awaited conclusion or beginning commencement of our Canal District Plan.
Bless you.
City Facility Energy Efficiency Project. And I don't know if y'all have a need for an exact session. You would?
Yeah, yes, sir. We have it up. Yes, sir.
All right, so then let's make sure that we allow enough time to be able to address those items. So that being said, the city manager, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Attorney, good morning. Proceed as you deem appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be with council this morning. Two exciting workshop items today. One, the Canal District Plan, which is also on your agenda today at 2 PM for formal adoption. I want to thank the city council for their incredible engagement during our tour last week, two weeks ago. Your input, your engagement, your leadership on that effort, and during that tour over the last five years has really been invaluable to getting us where we are today. I want to thank our staff, I want to thank Bridget Liddy, and all of the staff who put together a really wonderful tour for our community and for our council members in a really engaging session that we had at the Floyd Adams Complex about the Canal District Plan, its importance and its future. So we're gonna get into that. And we also have something that might otherwise be kind of a fly-by workshop item with the Citywide Facility Energy Efficiency Project. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that. But this is a really cross-cutting initiative that hits several of our Savannah GPS priority strategies and objectives, and hits a lot of our departments in some really incredible ways. And our Office of Sustainability has done a phenomenal job in implementing these plans. I'm really looking forward to you hearing this update and engaging on those questions. So we will begin with our workshop on common ground, the Canal District Plan. And I'm gonna turn it over to our senior director of planning and urban design, Bridget Liddy, to get us started and to introduce our other partners and staff who will be making this presentation with us today. Bridget?
Good afternoon, Mr. City Manager, good morning, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, and all of them. My name is Bridget Liddy, I'm Director of Planning and Urban Design in the City of Savannah, and pleased to be here today to talk to you about the Canal District Planning Process that was launched several years ago, but we are now moving forward with potential adoption of the plan.
I would like to recognize some members of my team that are here right now, Zarina Davis, Dejorn Barrett, who is actually our Savannah State intern. So welcome, DJ. And Akila Wright. And then we have some consultants that are also with us, Denise Grabowski from Symbiosity and Michael Hightower from the Collaborative Firm. So thank you all for the time this morning, and we're gonna go ahead and jump in. Before I get started, I wanted to highlight a video that really encapsulates the effort that we went through, and the community engagement, and the collaborative nature of the City of Savannah staff that worked on this project. So if you could indulge me for about eight minutes, it's a long video, but it's a very telling video on where we're going with the Canal District Master Planning Process. Over the years, and what we wanted to do was have a framework, as we move forward with the development of the arena, what would be happening around the facility?
Rich in history, this area west of the downtown historic district is the central focus for the Savannah Arena and Canal District. The city's process for a master plan takes into account preservation of neighborhoods and builds on consolidating previous plans, initiatives, and community input.
There are homes back there, there's industry back there, and there's a wonderful water resource that exists. And through the years, we've had the area grow. Originally, it started off as rice fields and wetlands, and from there, it grew into a very important area for Savannah's development. That would include the Savannah-Ogici Canal coming online in 1820s. From there, we moved into the railroad industry coming in in the late 1890s, and then with the advent of the I-16 overpass that came through in the late 1960s. All woven in that is also residents.
Carver Village was the first African-American subdivision and the only African-American subdivision in the country, designed for veterans coming out of World War II to make sure that they could afford a home. And so the development of Carver Village and the landscape of the 611 houses that were built, the integrity of that must always, because we must always have the history up front. We working with the city and we working with the people that have hired to make sure that we don't damage or cause any harm to come to the historic Carver Village neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods, as well as making sure we keep the integrity of the neighborhood at the forefront.
The opportunities are here to rebuild nature and elevate civic life.
It really is gonna set the stage for what a Canal District really looks like. What we really want to do is we want to reintroduce everybody to these natural features that are there. And I use the term reintroduction because a lot of these features are already there. The exciting part about it is, with that master plan, we're gonna be able to not only expose them, but also open them up to the community. And we want it to be more of an amenity, a feature, something exciting. And I think that's the beauty of this overall master plan. It's gonna give us the opportunity to take those features and really build on them, to make something exciting that you want to bring your family to see. You want to hang around in the Canal District after a show at the new arena, and you really can just enjoy yourself. You want to come up on a Saturday and kind of just take advantage of the natural features that's already there.
The centerpiece of the Canal District is $165 million brand-new, state-of-the-art arena. We're not going to fully realize the arena's potential unless we make a number of improvements around it that further connect the arena to the downtown area and surrounding neighborhoods. The Canal District is designed to do just that. It creates new pedestrian pathways, roadway improvements, exciting mixed-use development, and reactivation of long dormant spaces to create a literal extension of Savannah's downtown.
The intent of this project was to make a public investment in a historically low wealth area, and that's what we're going to see in the Canal District. We're going to see a lot of private investment based on the arena being the anchor to this development, to this area.
This is much more than just an arena project. It's really not only an economic engine, but it's also a huge social pride for our community going forward.
One of the things that we're looking at is the Waterworks Building and developing a community marketplace and entrepreneurial center.
We've discussed it being that building that will be for multi-use for our community and our neighborhood, which would bring in some businesses, as well as some small businesses being able to do some things for the community as well. Also, market-type situation, where individuals will be able to come in and buy and sell produce that's been locally grown within our city.
And the young people should be really excited about this, because this would be an area where we can have incubator businesses that grow into brick-and-water businesses, maybe even in the Canal District.
The master plan includes spaces and places in between the Canal District and downtown. It's so much more than a drive to the destination.
From downtown into here, there are a number of amenities that people just don't realize are here. There is a man-made lake right here, for which I've walked it. It's a beautiful area. There's a lot of just natural beauty in here that people just don't know about, because they don't have access to. One of the things that we know as a part of this project is, if we can increase that access, if we can increase facilities here into and out of downtown and the rest of the city, it's not just going to be a pretty-looking thing, it's actually gonna increase opportunities.
As the city continues to make major strides constructing the Savannah Arena, the Canal District Master Plan takes shape.
But I know that with collaboration, with the residents, with our alderwoman, Bonetta Lanier, I'm certain that we will be able to come to some type of understanding.
And what we've done is we've all come to the table. And in coming to the table, I say "we," the communities as a whole that are within the Canal District, the Cloverdale Community, the Carver Village Community, Brickyard Community, and the West Savannah Community, we've all come to the table and put our ideas of what we want to see happen.
They know that we are a determined community, they know that we are very, very involved, and we want to make sure that this is equitable for everyone.
We are working here to make sure that young people who grow up here and have prepared themselves to stay here to live, work, and play all around this Canal District. So this is a great opportunity, a great time for the City of Savannah.
The master plan also has an accompanying action playbook. And the reason why we have the action playbook is because there are so many different items that are put forth in the master plan, we needed to prioritize them. So within the action playbook, we have 19 specific items that need to occur as we anticipate the opening of the arena in 2022.
It's a once-in-a-generation creation of a region consisting of neighborhoods, public spaces, and major development. The Canal District Master Plan will bring into focus the exciting opportunities which lie ahead. The time is now to plan, participate, and plot a course of action.
So obviously, this video shows, you know, some greatest hits from Savannah past, and is an older video. And I think it demonstrates the broad support that this plan had five, six years ago, and brought to the community. And there was a ton of community planning around it. I think it also shows that in the intervening years, there's been a tremendous amount of progress in the so-called Canal District towards some of those 19 action items, even though to date, city council has not adopted the Canal District as a formal plan. And so we're in a, in some ways, we're in the same spot we were six years ago, but in many, many, many ways, we're in, have made tremendous progress on the plan already. And I think that's why we wanted to be able to show the video, not only to see and hear from some old familiar voices and some old familiar figures that worked on this plan, but also to see some of the community leadership that was supported, that are in different spots now and some in the same spot. So I think that even though this was a dated video, I think it kind of shows the importance of the planning process that happened years ago, but also a demonstration of the progress we've made, and I think the potential that we can still have with adopting the Canal District Plan.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and jump into the presentation to let you all know where we worked on this effort. We engaged Perkins &amp; Will and Symbiosity to assist with our planning efforts, working directly with them on doing this pretty heavy lift. And I will say it was a heavy lift, because when we went into the neighborhoods, there was a lot of distrust from promises made to the city, by the City of Savannah, to the residents, and we were able to bridge that gap with them and really come up with a plan that represented desires and wishes of the communities that were in the Canal District area. So to let you know, the boundaries of the Canal District area are shown on the screen, basically west of downtown and west of the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard corridor. As far as the vision goes, it was finalized, and I'll go ahead and read it for you. The Canal District is a new common ground in Savannah. It protects historic communities, rebuilds nature, elevates civic life, and allows the city to grow. The master plan seeks to coordinate actions and communication into a shared perspective, empowering Savannah residents and leadership to work together to develop resilient places and a stronger city. As mentioned in the video, there are two documents, the actual master plan document itself, which provides an outline of our process that we went through, the vision, which I just read to you, as well as activities to help enhance the Canal District proper. As we moved forward with the planning process, we realized that we really needed something to guide us at the city as far as implementation goes. What do we tackle first? Where are the priorities? And that resulted in the action playbook. And the action playbook outlines four guiding principles. The first principle is to guide policies that foster lasting leadership and resources to actually realize the vision. Building off of that, we also have another category for nature, and that's to restore natural systems to reduce flooding. For people, to protect and promote community culture. And for places, to preserve and create celebrated places. And as I mentioned, there were 19 different action items, all divvied up based on those four categories, to create the action playbook. Action playbook, results, and implementation. And that's what we really want to focus in on as we begin to review and adopt the plan. So what we did to kind of blow the dust off the plan and get re-engaged with it was host a Canal District trolley tour. That trolley tour was held on September 30th, and the goals of the trolley tour were to re-engage the neighborhood leadership and community stakeholders, to build support for the adoption of the plan, to tour and look at our accomplishments, see where updates have occurred, consider our challenges that are still on the table, and look for new opportunities. We also provided an opportunity through the tour to obtain feedback as we continue to move forward with the implementation of the plan. So just to go through our stops and our tour route, we started off going through historic Carver Village, and Jessica Baldwin, our preservation officer, was able to give us a nice, comprehensive tour of the development of Carver Village, highlighting the successes that the neighborhood had with designating the neighborhood as a National Register Historic District. Also, building on that, we created a local historic conservation district to protect the demolition of structures in the neighborhood. And then also talked about our cultural and resources study. Following through historic Carver Village, we then stopped at Bowles Ford Park, where Nick Roberts jumped on the trolley and was able to give us an overview of some of the improvements that were occurring in and around Bowles Ford Park, to include an image at the bottom of the screen of the playground. Keeping in mind that the plan calls for a network of community spaces and amenities that can support daily activities from the plan. And then we trekked on over to the Waterworks Building, where we met up with Luciana Spraker and Miranda Lumpkin-Lotzen, who shared with us information about the designation of both the Springfield Terrace School and Waterworks Structure as a National Register Historic District, or Place, excuse me. And then Luciana was also able to talk about the grant that she secured for the Springfield Terrace School. Miranda was able to talk about the tax credits that are being lined up potentially for the Waterworks Building. She also talked about the Georgia Southern University and Savannah State University feasibility study. Today, on your agenda, there's a C-MAR item to begin restoration and stabilization of the structure, which is super exciting. And from there, we continued to move on and loaded back on the trolley, where Kristy Lawrence and Sean Brandon joined us. Sean Brandon specifically talked about parking improvements within the context of the arena itself, as well as the multimodal connector on Cohen Street. Kristy Lawrence was able to talk about the real estate opportunities that we have with the amount of land that the City of Savannah owns in and around the Canal District, and re-engaging, or actually extending the contract for a consultant, RCLCO, to look at doing an economic and land use study of those parcels. From there, we trekked on over to the Tricentennial Park and had a great spot overlooking Louisville Road and Boundary Street, where Zach Hoffman was able to talk a lot about the Springfield Canal widening project, as well as other opportunities to improve and mitigate flooding in the area. As we went back on the trolley, we were joined by Steve Henry from our Transportation Department, where he spoke about the roundabout at Louisville and Boundary, Georgia Ports Authority activity, Styles Avenue improvements, Part 1 and Part 2, pedestrian amenities to include connections to neighborhoods, specifically along Louisville Road. He's also spoke about the Transportation Implementation Plan and the Heritage Trail. And our last speaker on the tour was John Enaganost from our office, Planning and Urban Design, who spoke about zoning and land use planning. Zoning and land use regulations are vital tools, as you all know, when it comes to coordinated growth. So we will be considering design standards, development guidelines, and land use regulations for the future of this area. We returned back to the Adams Complex, where we had a facilitated session by the Collaborative Firm to talk about those things, challenges, opportunities, where we have some celebrated accomplishments. During that discussion, it was very fruitful, and it led to where we are today, presenting the plan to you all. And so our next steps are actually to adopt the planning documents and move forward by planning, participating, and plotting our future for something bigger and better and brighter for the Canal District. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Bridget. And as we open it up for Q and A and discussion, I think if we could turn back to the slide which calls out the action playbook, which I think is really important for the plan and for the discussions to have a physical presence. And with that, Mayor, we're open to discussion on the common ground.
Well, first of all, let me thank you all for the work, for the presentation, I think for us, around that by reporters about, you know, why now? I just think we have so many things that we aggressively are working on our plate, we can't make everything the first thing. And this is now kind of dovetailing to the right time to be able to move forward on this. You know, to, I think, ultimately, even though we will approve this, I hope we will, there will be changes. But I think it's important to get it moving. And so to designate the actual, create the actual district, I think is a part and parcel to the progress we're looking to see on this. Any questions for council? Y'all want to vote now?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Exactly how much is this going to cost, this process, this playbook?
Well, I can provide what it cost when it was produced five years ago. We have not spent much money in revising the plan, thankfully, because I think there's so much great planning done and community participation that really the bone in the structure of the plan is very, very sound. You know, the investment that we've made in the Canal District, from the arena, from the infrastructure in and around the arena, from the allocations that city council has made for future investment via tourism product development dollars, for the Waterworks Building, for the connectivity to the Canal District, for the neighborhoods to the west and to the neighborhoods to the east, and to the grants that we've received, the federal grants for the Wetlands Park, et cetera, are gonna spell, you know, tens of billions of more investment into the Canal District. I think the real key for adopting the district plan is to also have a guide for private development who wants to come in and invest in the area as well. The city has put a tremendous amount of investment in public good into building this area, and that public good is meant to and can incentivize and draw in private investment. What this plan does is ensure that private investment comes, that we've got, that it's shaped in the right way to benefit our community in the ways that this council wants. So this is what this plan really is about. I think that there will be more public investment in the Canal District. It's a very important common ground for the entire city, but there's also been a tremendous amount of public investment here that's gonna spur private development. We need to show them the way.
Mr. Meldon, I understand it's a good plan, but I've sat here, this is gonna be my second term, and the first term, we spent over $500 million in the first district, and now we're going to do a major investment, which will be adopted, and I get that. And so where is this money gonna come from, and how does that now affect the other districts? Because there's some investments that I want to leave here, knowing that I created that legacy. And so I just want to make sure that the plans that you have for the first district, and it's gonna be like $100 million, right? In the third district, we haven't come close to that. And so there are some things that my district have set, and we voted. There's not been one time that we voted against anything that was going on the first district. There's no record for that, but there have been several times that this council had voted on it. So I want to make sure that this council understands that the same thing they want individually for their districts, we're sitting here, I'm sitting here, because I can only speak for the third district, I want a major investment. And so when we do this budget, I've sat down with some of the presidents, and we have a major investment that we'd like to take on to within the next two years. I don't want to leave the legacy that the people voted for me a second term to go unfinished, when people in other districts have been able to do that. Thank you very much.
Let me just jump in, because I think I have to put some perspective and context on this for everybody. This is a citywide, countywide project. It has over 20 years to make. We're just in the seats when it's coming to fruition. Some of you have been around in this room over 20 years ago, when we started talking about the possibility of an arena. Many of you were sitting around during the two successive plus referendums, in which county residents voted to put the arena in a location that the city ultimately decided would be. We recognize that the value to the arena would be to develop the arena district around it. So I mean, I understand where you are, aldermen, but I think this is way bigger than, we have community assets, citywide assets in the district, but I think this is really much bigger investment. And if you look at it in terms of time, we're talking about, this is 20 years plus coming to fruition. So I don't want to say you have to wait 20 years, but this is not a new...
Mr. Mayor.
This is not a new, this is not a new concept. This is just a vision coming into reality. I think it's been quite documented, even the five years that we walked away from it to address other issues, we're just coming back to this. But ultimately, this is, and hopefully, council will agree, and will portray it like this as being a really a regional asset, not people just in the first district come to the arena. I hope everybody comes. I mean, I think people come all over the place. And ultimately, the amenities there, although they might be in closer proximity to some folks, some neighborhoods, ultimately, hopefully, people from your district hopefully will come and enjoy the Canal District, and enjoy the arena, and enjoy the amenities, and benefit from the accoutrements and the planning. and benefit from the accoutrements and things like that.
Mr. Mayor, that's not what I suggested.
I said, I'm just giving, I'm giving context.
The Springfield basin runs through my district. I'm suggesting that when I'm sitting here, it's very difficult to explain that to people because they don't know. They know that we split that, so you explaining it.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I say, you know, I say, now, if you put everything on the same timeframe, apples are apples, then this is 20 years ahead of where we're talking about there.
Okay, so again, nobody can put words in my mouth.
No, but I want to make sure, Mr. Mayor, I think for us, it's a storytelling opportunity and a communication opportunity.
Yes, sir. And that is what I'm suggesting, that we make it clear. I know it's an investment for the entire city, but I can't sit here and say that there is not an investment that I want to leave that creates a quality of life in the third district. I know we're going to vote on this. I would not ever vote against it. I know it's an investment for the entire city, but there are people in the third district who have been waiting for things for 20-plus years too. That is the point that I'm trying to make. And thank you so much.
I think the great part about this discussion too, there's a line, there's a motto in the City of Chicago that I think is wonderful, is make no small plans.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a motto that Savannah adopted at its birth and should continue to kind of move forward, even though, you know, Chicago's got a trademark on it. The Canal District Plan is a, is not a small plan, nor is the East Side Neighborhood Plan, which was also done by S and E, nor is the South Side Revival Elevation Plan, nor was the Fairgrounds Project. There, I think there's a tremendous opportunity to move, and as you've seen, we've made progress on those, especially on the east side, and especially on the south side, with making those plans a reality, just like we're making the Canal District Plan a reality. And I think the Canal District can be a roadmap, a proof of concept that shows us how we can do this well, and we work with the community, and we plan the right ways. I absolutely, I agree with you, but I think that this council will set the table for, you know, some really big plans all over the city.
And I agree with that. And so keeping in line with that action plan, we've had some conversations about the new gym, and we've only had conversations, we want to have us a, something in the soil that's saying that we're moving forward. And so that has not happened. And while we're talking about plans, I want to make sure that everybody's listening, that we need to move forward on that too. We need some shovels in the ground and some dirt up telling people that we're moving on that plan too. Thank you so much for your time.
And we're cutting the ribbon next week on the Dundee Cove, Canal Cove.
Cove, yeah.
Again, Legacy.
It was just on Dundee.
Right, right. Legacy Project.
Yes, it is, and I agree. And we're going to keep doing it.
So, I mean, and that was done, done here at this table.
Yes, it was.
Aldo Woman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to tell you, Bridget Liddy and your team, y'all did a phenomenal job. And I truly appreciate the fact that you took us on that tour to show us what could possibly happen if this plan is adopted. Mr. City Manager, I want to thank you as well. I think this is going to be a win-win for the whole community, for the whole city, the county. We've invested lots of money into the arena, and now we need to go ahead and do what we need to do to make that Canal District what it is supposed to be. My concern is that Waterworks Building. I want to make sure that we make sure that that Waterworks Building is going to be a benefit for that community. And I've stressed that time and time again. I've talked to Mr. Hightower and told him my concerns about that Waterworks Building, and I'm speaking on behalf of the people that live in that area, that will be impacted by that area. Again, I just want to tell you, Bridget, you did a phenomenal job, you and your staff, and thank you, Mr. City Manager. And that, that video, it might be old, five years ago, but it is so significant to what it is that needs to happen in the Canal District, okay? Thank you.
Aldo Man.
Thanks. I just want to echo her comments. You did a great job, Bridget, City Manager, Bridget and your staff, and Mr. Hightower. I think it, I think it's important to note the comments that I made on the day of the tour. I was very interested and appreciated the fact that the civic engagement from five years ago is very similar to what we're hearing today. So I'm glad that this community was very involved in this process, and they still are supporting it. So they tell, thank you, Aldo Woman, the Neare for all the work that you've done.
Yes, phenomenal job.
Just wanted to commend and echo, commend city staff logistically to pull everybody together for the tour. It was a wonderful tour, to be able to see it in its, as the document says, common ground. It's a wonderful opportunity for our city and a model for, to be replicated for when we have pressing challenges throughout our community, throughout the county. And to see everybody, it was a packed house, especially for the facilitation afterwards, and a great discussion. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to also thank you, City Manager, and Mrs. Liddy, for the work, especially you, Mr. Liddy, Mrs. Liddy, because you were here, you was here, when, when the dust was still trying, trying to settle down, and there was nothing out there with some trees, water running down the canal that was still with some weeds. So things are coming to fruition, like the conversations we had, you know, back before six years when we were talking about this. I told the City Manager when he brought this situation that we're ready to do this now to my attention, I told him that I have this envelope in my house that has the Canal District on it, and I've talked about 2016 or so, that we were talking about this. So it's a good thing that we have now come forward, and I just give this, this administration, administration that we're in, as we are pushing this work forward and getting it done. I'm glad to see on the agenda today, in reference to what Aldo Woman Neare is very concerned about, and that is the sustainability of the Waterworks Building. And hearing the community persons talk about the Waterworks Building, and what I heard her talk about when I was on the tour with everybody, she, she is very, very concerned that the plan of her community, of her district, stay exactly to what they want. And I do believe that that is happening even what's on the agenda today. So let's continue to move forward and get this thing done, so we can continue to do these great things like the mayor has stated throughout the city's event.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Jay and staff, thank you all for all of the work that you did, you've done, you're doing. Thank everyone who participated in the tour. It was fun. We had a good time. Bridget, we've been at this a really long time, and thank you for all of your work. So Savannah is experiencing monumental growth and development, and especially on the west side. There are some areas in Savannah that has, they have been identified for being under-invested in. Some, just because of the growth, we're finally getting around to investing in those areas. And some, like on the west side, they have been under-invested in. And when you, when we saw the film, and you saw the rice fields, those were rice plantations. So our people have been in those areas for a very, very long time, for some generations. And so the area has been, because of its history, under-invested in, underdeveloped, and even the federal government stepped in and looked at Savannah and said that we need to do something about these areas. So we have three federal opportunity zones. One is in Third District. I think some of the second district is in that opportunity zone, so I'm sure the city will be making some investments in those areas, because we have identified those areas on the south side, with Kirk, and what's about to happen there across from Armstrong in that area, that area was identified. And on the west side, this area where the Canal District is and where Savannah was identified. But that whole area is different. We didn't get an opportunity to do a legacy plan over there. But we got some pieces of plans we're going to bring together, and one of those plans in that area is this Canal District Plan. And I'm excited, because now we're finally about to adopt this plan. I'm one of those people who've been at the table more than 20 years at this, looking for an investment for our under-invested in area. So there's some people who are no longer with us. I want to acknowledge Ms. Dorothy Pilote, Ms. Palmer, Ms. Newkirk, Mr. Dunham, Ms. Vera Wilson, Victor Cooper, they're not with us anymore. And Pam Oglesby is still with us, and Ms. Dixon is in Atlanta with relatives. She's an older lady now who needs to live with relatives. They were at this for a long time, so they would be happy today, and I'm happy today on their behalf, we're ready to adopt this Canal District Plan. Because of the development, what we all want in here, and I've heard it from us, we want smart growth and development. We want good growth and development. And in my opinion, we have been leaning more towards the developers and accommodating developers than the residents and our local people. And I think that we have an opportunity here with our new city strategic plan, and with these opportunities to, to really utilize this resident-driven, citizen-led, resident-driven approach. And this is what we're doing in this instance, and so that's good too. So maybe we'll have an opportunity, so development will have a good name, because of what we've been doing, development doesn't have a good name. In this action playbook and in the plan, there's a place to do community benefit agreements. Y'all know, we did a lot of work on that, and the reason I was pushing that is because of this activity, because we need more residents at the table. And we placed it on the back burner, where it's time to bring it off the back burner to the front, because a part of this initiative is to have residents who are being impacted by all of this growth and development, to give our citizens an opportunity to negotiate for benefits with the developer, whether it be the city, or whether it be a private developer. In the Canal District, the city owned several various large parcels of property, and that's why we took that tour. We actually looked at and concentrated on the parcels that the city owned in the Canal District, and what our contribution could be, what it is, where we're spending money in those areas. So we saw that, but we're going to have, I look forward to the opportunity for the tourism industry to come to the table, the hotel industries. I said to the residents, as we were on the tour, we have to anticipate all kind of construction types to be coming into this, this district. We have to anticipate hotels, we have to anticipate multifamily housing developments, single-family housing developments. We have to anticipate all of these things that's going to happen, because what's happening here, we need to accomplish two goals. We need to accomplish community upliftment, and we need to accomplish downtown expansion. And that's our task here. And we need to try to do both. So I think it's exciting as leaders and public administrators that we get to do these two things that often conflict, but I'm definitely committed to the community upliftment, because the investment was made, the public investment, to attract private investment, to uplift the community. You can't uplift the community without uplifting the people. So we got our work cut out for us to have these community benefit agreements, so residents who are organized with 501(c)(3)s can come to the table and negotiate with developers for benefits for their community. Opportunity, we could accomplish those two things, downtown expansion. So we need to make sure that there's a balance, that the downtown expansion doesn't overshadow the community upliftment, and the same thing vice versa with the Waterworks Building, it's going to be something that does that, it's going to service and serve the local neighborhoods and community. Also, it's going to serve the downtown district, the tourists will be excited. I do want to say this lastly, to impact this growth and development, this area with that Canal District, with the Waterworks Building, is a historic and is a cultural asset. We call ourselves Gullah Geechee people, because that's what we were always known, it was handed down from our parents, their parents, their parents, their parents, and it was a bad word one time, y'all were Geechees over there, it was fighting words, but now we're proud of that. And so what we're looking forward to having a Gullah Geechee imprint, a Gullah Geechee farmers market, because we are agricultural people, we want to return somewhat to those agricultural roots. And, and so this is an opportunity to have, to, to take this cultural and historic asset and leverage it, not only for the people that live there, but programs, so they could come in there and, and this could economically stimulate the area, but also for tourists who could come and see what the local Gullah Geechee Savannah people look like, and what they're doing in that area, and their history, and how they are expanding and expounding on their history. And so this is what we look forward to happening in that area. So I want to, again, thank everyone for all of the work that you've done on this project. Lastly, I want to say, Jay, I think it's important that we look at the implementation of the plan and what we're going to adopt here today. I have a stack of plans. I have the Goody Clancy Plan, the Hudson Hill Plan, the Woodbill Plan, the Waspsbette Plan, I have all those plans, and nothing, and very little through the years to see actually come out of those plans. And here we are today, adopting another plan that we're excited about. But I'm going to ask and get with you and staff that we could come back, maybe 60 days, with, with an implementation plan, another plan, how we're going to roll this out, who, what, when, where, why, how, how much, you know, let's, let's talk about implementation, so we won't fall in the gaps, and we could put this plan and the Waterworks on the fast track. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I want to just take an opportunity, since you lifted some names, also the names of Rhonda Williams.
Yes.
And the name of Francis Douglas.
Yes.
As well. I think y'all all know I live literally within blocks of this proposed district and walking distance from there. I pass it every single day. And so I think it's, fortunately for us, we have not been one, to Aldo Woman and this point, we have not been one to sit on plans. Hence why I think the timing, I mean, I would prefer to do it now and move on it than do it five years ago and sit for five years. Because I think that's what builds some of the angst that we experience in some communities, that you have a plan and then the other priorities come up. I think we've adopted that, and we're ready to, to move. We adopted, we move. But I appreciate your point. Mr. Melvin?
Thank you. I think our next presentation is going to show how plan implementation can work on a, on a smaller, but just impactful scale, and kind of where we're moving with Savannah GPS and how we incorporate, you know, some of our, what I'll call subordinate plans into our, our Savannah GPS and trying to get it done. Before we move there, kind of my workshop item is the power of good planning is evident in common ground, it's evident in the South Side Plan, it's evident in the legacy, civic legacy plan, and the big, the big things that this council has tackled and tackled, that big in the Fairgrounds Project planning. In order to continue to do that and continue to make no small plans, we're going to need to invest in the resources to do that kind of planning. And that's going to be a discussion that I'd like to have with Council when we discuss our FY '26 budget. I think we've got a phenomenal planning department. We need a little extra firepower there to be able to do the type of planning and implementation that we know that we need in this community. So that's really my workshop item with the Council about looking forward and how we kind of continue the momentum of these plans and make sure that we're also taking up future big plans for future councils and for future administrations to tackle this. Thank you.
Thank you. So hopefully, this passes without incident, and hopefully has the unanimous support of Council. That's our energy.
Thank you. So I'm going to bring up Chief Faye Massimo, Chief of Planning and Economic Development Service Center, who's going to introduce our sustainability team to you, and who've been working really, really hard, you know, at our, our Building Energy Efficiency Plan. I want to note the And I want to note the specialness of this endeavor that you're going to hear from today. This initiative crosscuts four different Savannah GPS priority goals. It's included in seven different GPS strategies. It involves 29 city departments, five different cities, departments, 29 city facilities, $100,000 worth of taxpayer savings a year. There's local business involvement, and it helps to meet our 100% sustainable plan, another plan that we're implementing. So Faye's going to introduce Nyla and team. And they're going to walk through really what I think is a success story about implementing big plans in big ways. So looking forward to it.
Well, good morning, City Manager, Mayor, and Council. We are excited to be here today as our Office of Sustainability steps into a fresh era with new staff, leadership, momentum, and a sharpened focus on equity and exceptional public service to all. This morning, we want to do three things. Share our plans on updating the 100% Savannah Clean Energy Plan approved by council in December of 21, 2021. Again, a part of the leadership that you have provided to the work that we're able to accomplish. Highlight the department's existing progress and successes, including how we direct benefits towards historically underserved communities. And spotlight, one of the proudest accomplishments, the citywide facility energy efficiency savings project completed in partnership with McKinstry. This project began in 2022 with the goal to identify and improve city facilities most in need of energy efficiency upgrades. The city procured owner's rep from 2KB Energy Services and thereafter selected McKinstry as the energy service company. Over the past three years, this collaborative team has audited city facilities, identified opportunities for energy savings and deferred maintenance, negotiated scope and savings, executed a contract that was approved by council in January of 2025, and have now successfully implemented. I know that implementation word is big this morning, so I want to underscore that. Have successfully implemented the vast majority of the construction. The result is a fiscally responsible investment that strengthens city facilities, saves taxpayer dollars, and most importantly, ensures that the communities we serve have equitable access to comfortable and safe recreational living and workplaces, reflecting our city's commitment to placing equity at the heart of every sustainability investment. I want to welcome our partners at McKinstry, Chris Smith, Director of Operations, and Scarlett Howe, Director of Client Brand Strategy and Communications, who are here with us today. And I would also like to introduce the City Sustainability Team. Do we have the slide up so that everybody can see that? There we go. All right. Nyla Oliver, who is our Sustainability Officer, doing an absolutely tremendous job. Adney Knight, who is our Sustainability Project Manager. Joshua Corning, our Clean Energy Program Manager. And Dishka Yiddy, who is our Clean Energy Program Coordinator. In addition, I'd like to thank our partners. You know, in the City of Savannah, we do everything. We work. In the City of Savannah, we work in great partnership across our departments and across chiefs and so forth. And so I want to give a shout out to Joe Sheerhouse and his team. One of the things, you know, we talk about great public servants make for great public service. And the work that we do also makes for great public stories. And I appreciate Joe and his team for making sure that they are carrying the stories that you're going to hear about this morning forward into the community. Thank you. Nyla?
Thank you, Faye. Council, this year you adopted the Savannah GPS Strategic Plan, which is our roadmap that ensures we are headed in the right direction. And in the Office of Sustainability, we want to ensure that each of our initiatives aims to move our GPS plan forward. So through the projects you will hear about today, we want to continually invest in Goals Two, Three, Four, and Six, as these are the strategies to which our current projects align. In 2021, unanimously adopted the 100% Savannah Clean Energy Plan, a plan with an ambitious primary objective to transition to 100% clean renewable electricity by 2035 and 100% clean renewable energy by 2050. We are now in the process of updating that plan, seeking to have a multi-focused vision that includes clean energy and additional sustainability objectives and a two-track energy goal, which will cover municipal operations and community-wide aims with an emphasis on external-facing, equity-centered, and outcomes-based solutions. We want the City of Savannah residents to know and understand that we've embarked on, what we've embarked on, and what we will continue to do for them. So now I'll get into some of the projects.
Thank you, Nyla. We just wanted to do a quick, high-level overview of some of our success in the past couple of years in our 100% Savannah Plan. First, we have an onsite city solar project, which we have completed two phases of totaling 27 facilities. The lifetime production of our panel is 3.61 gigawatts hour, which is the same amount of power if we had burned 2.88 million pounds of coal. Additionally, from July 2024 to July 2025, solar have saved the city over $104,000 on a utility spending. Second, we have made some progress in the electric vehicle space. Currently, we have 37 light-duty electric vehicles in our fleet and over 50 chargers across Savannah, with over 40 of those available to the public. We really wanted to highlight fleet and parking and mobility services for continuing this push toward electrification and EV infrastructure build-out. We have also recently conducted a future fleet electrification analysis and EV charger infrastructure analysis, both city operations and a public adoption. Now passing it to Adney to cover some more wins for our group.
Thank you. We're just moving over to some non-energy-related initiatives within our office. We have a community gardens program through which residents are able to apply to create a garden in their neighborhood on a city-owned FEMA lot. So there are 55 community gardens throughout the city. They're a mixture of public, private, and school-owned gardens. 12 are on city-owned lots. We have partnerships through this program with Healthy Savannah, Loop It Up Savannah, to try and provide, or continue to expand this program or improve this program to provide spaces for our community to grow food and/or herbs or flowers and engage in education. We also have a brownfields assessment grant. The goal of this grant is to revitalize neighborhoods and develop underutilized lots in those communities. We have 30 sites nominated by the Brownfield Advisory Board, which is a compensated advisory board. We have had three site visits complete in the past month. Additionally, through this grant, our colleagues at Economic Development have been working with Symbiosis and StanTech to create a market study or an area-based redevelopment plan for Waters Ave. And lastly, we just wanted to highlight our Earth Day Festival. We hosted it this past March at Davenport Park and had over 1,200 attendees at the event. We had 60-plus vendors that included nonprofits, businesses, and other departments within the city. This was a way to celebrate Savannah and our environment and give local environmental organizations a chance to showcase the work that they're doing, as well as allow residents a chance to learn about all the environmental work that's happening in their city in ways that they can get involved.
All right. And now we're going to jump into more of a deep dive on the project that Chief Damassimo introduced, which is our energy savings project. And before we get into all the details of it, I know we've already highlighted the partnership a little bit, but specifically wanted to share our gratitude with our facilities group here, who's helped manage and implement and fund this project. And then also a special shout out to our Rec and Leisure Services, as well as Fire and Police. We were working a lot in these buildings, and they were always accommodating and made it really easy for us to be able to come in and make these energy conservation measures. And then on the partner side, again, wanted to shout out McKinstry, who is our energy service company, 2KB Energy Services, who served as our owner's representation, as well as our other subcontractors who engaged throughout the project. And you'll hear in a video from one of them here shortly. But I will give it to Nyla to jump into some of our key facts.
Yeah, thank you, Josh and team. So I'd like to highlight a key fact from the project. This was a $1.9 million investment that focused on priority facilities improvements. And in total, 29 city facilities were included. That included community centers, fire stations, administrative buildings. And these upgrades are projected to generate guaranteed savings of about $129,000 in year one. The scope of the project included interior and exterior LED lighting, along with building envelope work such as weather ceiling, door sweeps, and more. And then finally, the first year of measurement and verification is included in the project cost to ensure the savings we project are being realized. So why does this project matter? First, it represents a smart use of taxpayer dollars. We're seeing measurable annual savings, reduced operating costs, and long-term value. It creates safe, stronger community spaces, from upgraded lighting to new windows. And these changes directly enhance the comfort and safety of the 29 facilities that our residents rely on and gather within. There's visible progress citywide. Each of our six Aldermanic districts benefits from these improvements, and 18 of the buildings fall under the IRA low-income threshold for the climate and economic justice screening tool. This project matters because it strengthens our partnerships with local businesses, supporting economic opportunity and building community pride. And then finally, projects such as this one build trust and credibility with our residents and offer opportunities to share publicly so that they can clearly see the results of the city's investments. So we also want to tie in how this project specifically relates to our new GPS plan. And as you can see, it aligns with four areas. While Goal One is not a core focus of our department, this project uniquely supports it, adding the capability of public safety through improved lighting and supporting our hard-working public safety teams. This project also contributes to Goal Three by engaging local disadvantaged business enterprises, and then Goals Four and Six, which after this next video, short video, Josh will speak more to these investments and responsible usage of our taxpayer dollars.
I've actually had the pleasure of meeting just every occupant, every custodian, anybody who lives and operates within a City of Savannah building. And they've just, you know, they've been like a second family. They've definitely opened the doors, opened the closets, you know, open to everything they can for us and to let us come in and do this work for the city so that we didn't have any sort of hang-ups or delays in construction.
It was a great opportunity. We do a lot of residential retrofits. And so this was our first major commercial retrofit. It gave us an opportunity to learn the different sides of weatherization when it comes to commercial buildings. Some of the benefits of the changes that we made from weather stripping the doors, going in and air sealing around large gaps in the ceiling area was to help remove the outside air from coming in. The goal is to keep the inside cool, keep the conditioned air in one space. This will produce savings. A lot of times when you go into buildings, you can feel around the doors, and then you can feel the colder air coming out. And so, for instance, here at the fire station, they have a lot of conditioned and unconditioned spaces. And so the goal is to try to really trap the air that's within those conditioned spaces and make sure it stays in those spaces to help them with their savings as well, too.
My name is Jelana Robinson. I am the Activity Coordinator at Mary Flannoy. I coordinate activities for the seniors here at the center. The company that came in and did the lighting, I think that they were absolutely amazing. They made sure they took care of the lighting, of replacing all the lights fairly fast, because I thought it was going to take a while. But like our largest room, it only took them about 25 minutes. They were fast, and it's brighter in here. So, yeah, they did a great job.
All right. And then just rounding us out here, looking more into details on the financials of it and talking about the kind of the system of a guaranteed energy savings performance contract. So we are going to be seeing these utility savings annually after we've made this upfront investment with a simple payback in 11 years. And these savings are guaranteed, as Nyla mentioned, with the measurement and verification for 20 years. And really just want to emphasize that we're able to address deferred maintenance with energy-efficient materials that focus on low upkeep and long lifespans that will be warranted as well. And then again, it's a great savings tool, but it's also going to have that tangible, visible impact. And our residents in Team Savannah will be able to feel that with the better lighting, as well as more consistent temperature controls, as well as that exterior lighting at fire stations and our community centers. And then you heard from Nicole in the video, but she is the CEO and founder of Be Smart Home Solutions, who is a local DBE, who is involved in this project and was able to partner with McKinstry more on the commercial side of things as well. And then just one other added benefit that we wanted to share is that we are working with McKinstry to develop a communications plan that we can put out in the community so that folks know what the differences are, how we got there, and why we did them as well. And then finally, we wanted to invite you all to a ribbon cutting at Fire Station 12 on October 24th at 10:00 a.m. Looking to have leaders there to see these improvements in person and officially conclude the project.
So thank you all for your time. And City Manager, we'll hand it over to you, Tillyon. Any questions?
I just want to, we've always had an all-star sustainability group here in the City of Savannah. Nick Deffley, Alicia Johnson. I think that this team behind you, the group has changed. We've got phenomenal leadership in Nyla. Joshua was keeping the whole office going there as a one-man shot for a long time. We've added a tremendous amount of people power and smarts, and they're delivering results to the City of Savannah every day. So I'm really, really proud of the office's sustainability, how this council has invested and kind of the expertise that we've been able to bring in to actually deliver on some projects. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Your team is phenomenal. Thank you all so much, but I do have some questions. In reference to your community gardens, you have 12 that's located on city-owned lots. Where are those? And can the public just go and be a part of planting and learning how to plant and what have you on those lots so that they could possibly take it back to their communities? And if so, I'd like to know where those lots are located.
So we can send out a list of the city-owned lots? So the way the program works... Oh, sorry. So the way that the program works is that if there's a member of the community that's interested in starting a garden, they reach out to us and say, "We're looking for a space." And we look at city-owned FEMA lots because we can't construct anything on those. We provide them with potential options in the community of the lots.
And then if they're in the west side of Savannah, there's the Action Grant. And so they're able to obtain some funding for supplies through that grant. And it's very neighborhood-led. They set up, they decide what they want to grow and how to grow it. We provide resources on how to build beds or where to obtain beds, where to obtain soil and compost, and how to grow and growing calendars and things of that nature. But ultimately, it is pretty neighborhood-led. We're there as a support, but we don't manage the gardens. Because with 12 gardens, there's a lot of turnover, and, you know, each garden wants to operate a little differently. Yeah. But we are working, we have been in talks with Healthy Savannah to explore ways in which we can do, like support help classes, where we can have folks come in and learn about how to grow certain things. And then in partnership with Katrina Hayward at the Economic Development Center that manages the Action Grant, we are working to do community garden tours. And we also are trying to improve our community garden manual. The last time it was updated was in 2020. And so we're working on updating that and trying to provide more resources to... to folks who want to start a garden.
Okay, you said there's a grant over in West Savannah?
Yes.
And I've seen community gardens in the third and second district.
And the sixth.
And the third.
And the sixth?
And the fifth.
Okay, I would definitely like to know where those lots are. And if there are any additional FEMA lots that we can put those community gardens at, that would be awesome.
Yes.
And let me ask you all this. There was a time way back when, I'm 65 years old, so I'm talking when I was like maybe 10, 11 years old, so that's about 50, 55 years ago, where you could walk down the street and you could pick fruit and pecans and all that stuff off of trees in certain communities. Can you possibly think about getting back to something like that? I saw where in Australia, there's a main street where they just grow fruit and people can walk down the street and just pick the fruit off the tree and what have you. I would like for you all to think about possibly getting back to that type of thing here in our city. Also, I want to commend you all on reducing the cost. $116.5,000 a year, that is phenomenal. So that means we could take that money and do something else with it in another location, program, or whatever. Now, the ribbon cutting, Fire Station Number 12, everybody don't know where Fire Station Number 12 is. Could you tell us for the public to know where it's located? So in case they want to come out, they can.
Yes, we will provide that address by the end of your questions.
My question is, I have ended.
While she does that, I guess I did forget to mention, too, we'll send out the list of gardens on city-owned lots. We do also have a community garden map that we recently published about a month or two ago in partnership with Healthy Savannah. And so folks are able to get on the map, click on a garden, and see who to contact if they want to volunteer. So, fire?
So, question, so I want to piggyback, and this is really more for the manager, to Alicia's question. The savings is on paper. But from an administrative standpoint, how are we able to encapsulate that savings and say, "Well, since we're not paying this amount here, we're able to repurpose this amount for something here"? I think, you know, saving on paper doesn't really mean much to people. It means something for balance books. But I think we have to be able to show the relationship of saying that something that does not exist now exists because we're able to take money we save from, you understand what I'm saying? And be able to move that. And so, I mean, you know, it's probably in a way that we report out, but I think it will be very helpful, particularly in future budget years, to be able to say, "Here, savings, savings here. This happens because of the savings."
So I'll give a concrete example for $129,000 in actual savings that we don't have to pay for energy because of this project. That's going to fund two new firefighters at our new Hampstead Fire Facility. And so it's going to take a whole lot more than two firefighters to staff that station. But that's how we can project those savings. So those are, that's $129,000, those two firefighter positions that we don't have to ask our taxpayers to give us more money for because we've been able to do some good government and find those savings.
But extrapolate that more, we have to figure out a way to codify that, you know, in a record that this doesn't happen because of this. I think, you know, in our strategic plan, really finding ways of showing the relationships to actions on one end of the house affect the other end of the house. The savings here affects two new firefighters out there. I think it's great. I just, I think when people say, you know, "Why are we engaging in these types of things?" We have to be able to show the relationship between the two. I saw, what's up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go back to the vehicle, the electric vehicle page and ask a question. So do the City of Savannah have electric vehicle stations?
Charging stations.
Yeah, charging stations. Yeah, we have charging stations.
Okay, so somebody in the mic, so the public can hear.
Yeah, so we have over 50 in the city. And over 40 of those are available to the public currently. Looking at expanding more and figuring out what mechanisms we can use to incentivize private use of those while also keeping them available for city fleet as well.
Josh, can you talk a little bit more about where those are?
Thank you, City Manager.
So 10 of those are at the Fort Adams Administrative Building. Six of them are out front, which are open to the public. And there are also four in the back, which are limited to city vehicles. We also have a lot in the parking decks downtown. And then we also have one at the, right near the Banshell at Forsyth, and one at the Visitor Center as well.
They are free of, they can be, is there a charge for it or is it free?
Currently, they're free. I believe most of them are already in spaces where you have to pay for the general parking, regardless if it's an EV or not. So currently, the stations are free. But I think we are looking at different options going forward with softwares that will be able to track the use and kind of the impacts of what charging would be.
Don't you limit the...
Yes, the future, we need to expand our EV charging infrastructure. The way that we're going to be able to expand more broadly is to do public-private partnerships with EV charging. And it's going to, and energy is a commodity and folks are going to have to pay to charge their vehicle, just like you got to pay for gas at the station. But that's how you're going to be able to expand that infrastructure at a much bigger scale.
Very good. And that's the point I was looking at, to see if that is happening right now or do we have any plans in the future to do that? Because that is another renewable fund source that we can use to help our citizens. The other thing I'm impressed about is the partnership page. Thank you all so much for the equitable flow-out of the partners that's being used. We talked about some DVD's that are on the list. And I'm so glad to see that we're doing that here in the City of Savannah, continuously doing a good job with that. I think that is all of my questions. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Welcome to Team Savannah. I have a community garden that's on a FEMA lot on 58 in Costa Rica. They're currently experiencing some irrigation and backing up over there. This is from Mr. Lennon, right? He's sent a 311 call out, and so he continues to have this problem. It's at the Delessa exits from the Turin Parkway. Can you send somebody from there? It's creating a health problem, stagnant water, but it's a beautiful garden. And I want the listening community to know, anybody who is interested in doing community partnerships, we were able to get some money from Home Depot, yes, right? So they give seeds and stuff like that and chairs. But the other question that I have is, there are four elderly homes in my district, and they have wanted to do these type gardens. Is there a way with partnering with them? And whom should they call to ask about those? We want to take care and keep our elderly babies busy. And gardening is one of the things that we have on our list to make sustainability in those areas. How do they contact you about doing that? And I'll get with you afterwards.
So if they are interested in looking at options in their community for a garden, if there are any city-owned lots, they're welcome to reach out to me. Okay, in that case, they can still reach out and I can try to help out, you know? So are they just on their own lots or...
They have a senior building, still wear towers. They have some area that they're interested in putting a community garden there. It's not a FEMA lot, but it is something where we take out our elderly people.
Yeah, they're welcome to reach out to me. I have, let's see, I have my business cards, but we have our contact information and I can share that, you know? But, yeah.
Part of the problem, Mr. Melder, they spoke to Mr. Hoffman. There's a drainage problem over there, and we're supposed to be working on that. I want you to get some feedback on that, please. All right, Mr. Lennon, you hear that? Stop calling today. Thank you so much.
Mr. Leggett?
You're doing a great job, too, sir.
And we can...
Mr. Mayor, we have identified a couple of places in the second district. I know we do have some community gardens, but we're starting to reinstitute some neighborhood association. And we want to look into identifying some space for some more community gardens. And I guess we just have to reach out to you guys to figure out what spaces are good and what do we have as far as some water opportunity for them?
Yeah, we can definitely help with resources. And if we don't have resources, point them to the right resources. So we have Laura Walker in Water Resources who can provide some rain barrels. So even if it's not a city-owned lot, we can definitely try to help as much as we can to just set it up. Even if it's not necessarily through us to point people in the right directions, like for example, the Action Grant through Economic Development or trying to explore other sites, looking on maps on potential sites, even if they're not a city-owned theme park. So they can definitely reach out and we'll do our best to help set it up with whatever resource.
Are we still maintaining the one on Gwinnett Street next to the Entrepreneurial Center?
Yeah, so that one was a previous grant. It was a nursery, Savannah Tree Foundation in partnership with, yeah, with the City of Savannah.
And the reason I'm asking is because the seniors are asking for those grapefruits. And they've been asking, so they're asking about the grapefruit. So if we have an opportunity someplace else that I can tell if we can get those trees or those grapefruits again, because I think that was the biggest grapefruit I've seen.
I have a question in reference.
No, sir, I have one. I have a question for Mr. Melder also. Could you talk about public-private partnerships when we talk about our EV opportunities?
So there are a number of private entities that would generate revenue through the supply of power-plugging electric vehicle, right? They need parking spaces to put those EV charging stations in. We have a lot of parking, whether that's on our curves at our right bank in our city-owned parking decks. The public-private partnership there would be to be able to supply the charging units at the cost of the private partner. And they capture some revenue from the use of those charging stations and for the supplement of power that's being provided there. So that's how P3 would work. And normally, P3s are about a private entity that has some revenue opportunity by providing what we would refer to as a public good in the public ground.
And the reason I'm asking you that is because I know on the horizon, we over at CAT are talking about some city-public-private partnerships on the horizon. We're dealing with electric buses and just different areas where we might be able to utilize space.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're pleased and grateful.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all for your presentation. Good job. I need to go back, as I often do, like a broken record, but it's community institutional knowledge. Just saying, I'm old, I've been around. But in the early 2000s and the aughts, Mayor Otis Johnson and Mayor Edmond Jackson, they were regulars coming to meetings on the west side because Hudson Hill was the only neighborhood with an environmental committee because of the problems in the area with the environment. And they were very instrumental in getting us hooked up with a lot of agencies out of Atlanta, some federal government agencies, the Harambe House. They did excellent jobs being a partner. And they went away from that and created the Sustainability Department based on all of the many activities that we were doing. And now we're to this 100% sustainability plan and the work that you all are doing, which is great work that I respect a lot. And I've been talking to Gensler lately about smart cities, that they're looking at our area and they would love to come and build a smart city. But we're competing with industrial import development for the space. Now, Savannah has made a commitment for 100% sustainability for all of this. So I would think that we would welcome organizations such as Gensler on wanting to create sustainable development in our area that is more people-friendly than the environmental piece that I'm circling in the background, too. Because right now, I'm hearing this and I'm excited about the work that you're doing. But when I leave here, I'm going to meetings with residents or talking about class action lawsuits because of the environment and where we live on the west side with air, water, noise, trucks, harsh, toxic environment, up all night, sometimes can't sleep. And so I'm leaving this wonderful work that I respect so much, what you are doing. And I'm going to people who are suffering day and night because of the environment where this got its start. Can you, y'all see, y'all see the ID in there? So now, we got a meeting, looking at this lawsuit, I guess looks in my bag, on the class action lawsuit because of the environment from Hudson Hill down to Gitcheton and Tremont Park. And we're talking sustainability. And we got people who want to come to this area and create more sustainable solutions. But I bet you, we probably lean more towards that industrial import development than for clean, 100% sustainable, new city development. And I just needed to mention that here today. But I love the work that you all are doing. I look forward to what's next. But please keep in mind what I'm saying about what's happening over there and what you might see. So let me see if there's anything else. So Saturday morning, we'll be in the Hudson Street Community Garden. Come on out. We're working with some composting right now. We went down to South Georgia Macintosh to work with some partners there on creating compost. And we really need to do more of that, y'all. We need to create more compost because, especially on the west side, and that's why we were concentrating on that, because we were able to put the beds of the crops in the ground. We had to build up the beds. Now we need a covering because the air is, some snow-looking ash stuff is falling out the air on a regular basis. But these are the sons and the daughters and the grandkids are share properties. So the knowledge is there, just need more resources to do this work. We have a program called Reestablishing, Reconnecting with our agricultural roots, where we want to place, we're collecting what we call heirloom or legacy seeds. We still got some of those trees in the area. We got some grapefruit trees. All of the plum trees are gone and some more trees, and they're taking that fruit. Now, we talked about it Monday at the community meeting, collecting those seeds, putting them in bags and naming them, because a lot of those trees and bushes are gone. So we're trying to collect the seeds of the ones that's left and share those. So like I said, Saturday morning, we'll be in the garden.
Is that an invite?
Exactly, I'll call you. I'm going on that. So that's it. We need to go there.
Thank you. I wanted to let, you mentioned Mayor Jackson, Mayor Johnson. They had a pretty decent brick sister golf there as well at that time.
Oh, Lord.
Record is the record, truth is the truth. And even now, the Harambe House continues to do work and actually gave a significant amount of money to the Hudson Hill community to continue to work with. The things that we don't control, the air, we don't control. We don't. And so, you know, folks have the ability to seek legal redress and we trust that they will, you know, for the things that we don't control. To that end, it was maybe like the beginning of August, I was in Atlanta with you, Alicia Brown, where we were part of announcing Georgia Bright Solar for All, which it was important to me because it was going to provide free solar arrays to 800 families. 800 families. Free leases, no money ever. And so I think Savannah was one of three or four cities, Savannah, Atlanta, the indicator and another city. And so I was excited to be able to help bring that back because it gets to the point that you're trying to make. You know, it doesn't work unless everybody's able to get there. Literally, I think I was there the morning of the Fourth Day at the press conference. And the morning of the Fifth, the Trump administration announced that they discontinued the program.
Oh, wow.
Literally. I mean, you know... And so, I mean, you talk about missed opportunity and I'm sure Alicia was absolutely heartbroken. But I mean, this was ways of the work that we were doing here, really being able to take the work of sustainability and really be able to bring that down to the singular house, the singular resident, that they can take advantage of that. And it was just a huge equity shift. And then, you know, to get to that point where we had this big old freaking press priest kind of press bop about it and everybody's all excited and we're high-fiving and I'm ready to get back to tell Savannah about how this is going to work and how we want to have our residents throughout the city who have been historically disadvantaged to be able to get on the solar train. And then to find out it went where our brick money went. It went to land a mistake toys. And so I hate that, but I think for us, we have to continue to push because, you know, really equity is going to be where it's at. We can't get there unless everybody's able to get there. So, all the way to the Blackface and all the way to Plumbon.
Thank you. In reference to the... I don't know if it's a garden. I see a lot of trees over there by the Entrepreneur Center in your district. I see those trees, they're like dying. So can the community go and get those trees? If they can revitalize them? Are those fruit trees, what kind of trees are they?
Yeah, so they were trees that were left over from the previous partnership with Summit Foundation. And I think some of them were planted around the city by our Park and Tree Department. And the rest of them, I'm not sure. They were planning on planting whichever trees could be...
Could be saved.
Right. And so I'm not sure if those are salvageable. If that is the case, we're definitely to try and allow them.
Okay, I'm going to let folks know that they can go and save those trees because I saw that and I was concerned that they were just... They're not being taken care of or what have you, so.
Can you point them to the sustainability office?
Well, I'll tell them, but I mean, the people I talk to, they're going to go and get them right there and there and save them. No, I'm just saying, you know, before, I don't know what the process is for them. How my glasses get over here? Give me those, hand me those. Thank you. I was looking for them.
We'd love not to...
Thank you. But I mean, they're in a dire straits situation from what I could see. And if we can get them to some people who could plant them and save them, then we'll give you a call and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay?
All the way to Plumbon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Team, fantastic job. It's wonderful to meet you. You're a breath of fresh air, pun intended. And it's really great to see a young, energetic team at the helm and an office that's found its footing and is headed in the right direction. You have what I believe to be one of the toughest jobs in the city because it is so comprehensive, yet you have to be so lean and tactical at the same time. As evidenced by this discussion, so many points that you could touch upon that encompass sustainability, resilience, and so much more. And you also carry the weight and the knowledge of what a precarious situation our city is in and the planet is in today. We all woke up this morning with a Seabuck alert for blue sky flooding and a closing of Highway eighty. But although it is a gray sky out today, it's not raining. And those are going to become more frequent. You know how precarious it is for us. But I give you that charge, know that I support you. I believe our council supports you. And that you're going to continue to grow and do incredible things in our community. Continue to be those evangelists, to show that it saves money, it saves time. It's the smart thing to do so that we can share with the other municipalities in Chatham County and beyond what impact this can have together. So know that we continue to support you. We look forward to your great success and keep on pushing.
Thank you. I think it's a good note to close on, Mr. Manager. We appreciate you all and look forward to... Don't be so quick. We're not finished with you. Look forward to seeing you and pushing out this journey to where we are and we just want to let you know, very proud of you. So thank you.
Yes, good job.
Address to you all. It's twelve zero five Bradley Boulevard.
Fifth district. Is that Bradley Point?
Bradley.
Fifth district. That's your district? Or that sixth, man? It used to be the fifth.
I built it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good news and good progress today. Entertaining motion subjective session of purpose of legal.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion. If that's what I was asking.
Probably moved the second in. Is legal only?
Throw employment in there.
Huh?
Throw employment in there, please. Employment in person.
Employment, yeah. Employment and legal, all the things here by saying aye. I propose motion passes.
For the fourth floor, fourth floor conference.
Okay. Fourth floor today. Guess where I went yesterday?
Okay, ten AM.
Better start.